All right, it's six o'clock and I'll call the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting for City of West Richland to order six P M. Call the roll, I'll have Steph in to read the hybrid meeting ground rules for us this evening and then call roll.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand and also please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Ring.
Yeah.
David Fettow.
Here.
May Hayes. Kate Moran.
Present.
John Smart.
Here.
Ben Stoker.
Here.
Mayor Proton Brink is joining us by way of Zoom this evening, he's out of town. So with that, may I ask Councilmember Bloom to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation in matter of evil, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bloom, appreciate it. Council, the agenda is before you this evening. We previously had an executive session scheduled that will not be necessary this evening, so we will not have that executive session. And this evening for presentations, we have Sarah Swan with Mid Columbia Libraries that will join us this evening and give us an update on the Mid Columbia Library Annual Report, and I also see that you have a guest with you this evening, so if you'd like Sarah to go ahead and come up to the podium and then introduce your coworker with you, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt, please?
For our Wi-Fi usage as well as our computer sessions in the branch, next slide. So, as I mentioned, fourteen percent of all of our checkouts were made by West Richland residents, which is fifteen checkouts per capita. And you can see that's close to two hundred and sixty-five thousand checkouts or items of our collection. And to give you a little perspective, the next highest branch has ninety checkouts per year. So you here in West Richland, people are voracious digital users, so we have heavily invested in our digital collection and that is a benefit to the Richland, West Richland, excuse me, residents here who use it at the highest amount across our system. And then as far as reserving materials, there that we are, this branch is the third highest across our district. And so we have a courier that runs six days a week, and so if you go online or call our branch, you could have an item that is in Othello, it is going to be in West Pasco, and that would be at the West Richland branch the next day, and then you would receive notification to go and pick that up. Next slide compares our collection against city systems as well as some of the other districts near us. And you can see the area in blue is our digital collection and the area in red is our physical collection. So our, the size of our collection is, you know, just over half of a million pieces of our collection. And the area in yellow, you might ask what that is. And so branches or library systems that are of a smaller size are able to pay into the state consortium. It's called the Washington Anytime Library, and that's a digital collection where if you don't have your own digital collection or you want to enhance your own, you could pay into that, and so you're actually competing against close to a million other users across the state for that that collection. By comparison, North Central Washington Libraries has a budget that is going to be almost nine million more than Mid Columbia Libraries, so you can see we are, we are a leanly run organization and we also want to give back to the community and we do that with the, our most important resource, which is our collection. Next slide. So again, you know, if you're looking at our budget annually, it's one point three two five million or seventeen percent of our total budget. Our collection at any time is worth more than twelve million and then for insurance purposes, we value the collection beginning of the year and this year it was seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of a value of the collection when the West Richland branch, but again, that can change, that's always changing with our courier every day. And by comparison, we spend a million dollars more than Richland Public every year in our collection. Next slide. Oh, I think maybe back on. Shoot, I must have messed up, excuse me, so what I thought was a slide there was going to be, sorry Stephanie, you can go to the next one. Oh, there it is, okay, so over two thousand seven hundred people have participated in our West Richland programs this year. That's definitely a boost and we're loving seeing people come back into the branch and enjoy our programs, especially love as this Jason, that picture, that boy's face at the bottom of that parachute there. So not only is our collection a good draw for West Richland residents, but our programs as well. And I, we, there's a new program that's taking place at our West Richland branch and it's Love on Leashes. So struggling readers often can be intimidated by reading to another person out loud. And so being able to read to a service animal who's just loving their listening to you, not trying to make eye contact has been shown to really help struggling readers, so love seeing that in our branch. Next slide. Thank you, so on this slide, you'll see some of our promotions for our summer reading challenge, which Jason has seen said it's, I shouldn't steal all your talking points, but we've seen a really a great attendance for that so far this summer, and at any given time, you can go online and check out our calendar to see what programs we have going on across our system in addition to the West Richland Library, next slide. Thank you, so last year alone, over four hundred and sixty-five Richland, West Richland residents, excuse me, became new cardholders, and again, of all the cardholders, which is over fourteen thousand for West Richland residents, over a thousand of those are strictly digital users, so they've not come into the branch, they've gone online, they've gotten their digital card and they are using our Libby app to read our, our collection. Next slide. We just completed our community needs assessment, which we heard from over two thousand six hundred residents across our district. And what was showing up as one of the top priorities for people across our system was access to public Wi-Fi, access to internet and then printing, so we have, we free Wi- high-speed Wi-Fi in all of our branches, you can access it from the parking lots, you can print five up to five items each day from our system in addition to using our computers within our branches. Next slide. And so these are some of the, some of these are new that came about during COVID, the curbside pickup, we still maintain, if you wanted that contact list pickup of your items, a library grab rags is essentially our staff, our personal shopping for you, whether it be your family, whether you're semi-three-year-old loves dinosaurs and they, our staff will pick out pieces of the collection up to a hundred per library card at any given time and fill those, and again, if you do curbside, they'll bring them right out to your car. And of course, Libby is our overdrive, it's our online access to our collection and then Canopy is our online video streaming services, which has a lot of foreign films. Someone on staff likened it to like Netflix, but without the brain drain, so it's going to be more in your cheat in your life, but everything, next slide. We have a program, it's a hundred books to read before kindergarten, which was shown to be again with our community needs assessment, over fifty percent of respondents felt early literacy, helping families read and parent resources was extremely important to them, so we're happy to be able to continue to provide those resources for West Richland residents, next slide. So again, I've touched on it a few times, but we've just completed our community needs assessment, we'll be using that data to then form a new strategic plan and really, we had a ten-year plan that was developed in twenty twenty, but we felt like as the pandemic went on, it wasn't necessarily going to be fitting in the needs of the community, so we asked the community with the local firms on our insights, what they felt was important to their communities and are really happy to have that data back, yeah, and I just got the preliminary numbers, which I'm sharing with you, points today. But we were like really excited to dive deep into that data and understand what are the needs of communities and how can libraries continue to serve and meet the needs of the community. Next slide. So we, again, that's kind of just what I mentioned, but West Richland residents responded in force, we had I think close to two percent of the population here, we are looking for one percent from each one of our communities, but close to two percent of West Richland residents responded, so they want to be heard and we love it, next slide. So, as I mentioned, we are a large district, we either have annexed entities or we have contracted entities of which the City of West Richland is a contract. Next slide. And so if you are an annexed city, you pay our twenty-nine cent levy rate, but as you can see across the district, it is a very good value across comparison districts, across our states and across the area, I should say. Next slide. So the annual contract amount, if you're looking at the value that we provide to West Richland residents, that area in baby blue is going to be the amount of our contract with you that we serve you with annually. The area below is going to be the costs or value that we provide to the City of West Richland. And so that blue area is going to be direct operating costs related to the branch. And then the indirect operating costs, it's going to be our programming, our marketing team that we're able to really benefit from economies of scale, centralized services that benefit the whole system entirely, you have a small amount of capital expenditures from last year and then that value that we've essentially, you know, calculated here, so six hundred and seventy-four thousand. Again, it varies, it was seven hundred fifty thousand at the beginning of the year, but again, ebbs and flows, but we're really proud of the value and the service that we're able to provide to the City of West Richland for your residents, next slide. So as we look forward, our contract is up, we're looking to, here in the future, looking to discuss ways in which we can continue to provide value and service, expanded services to the City of West Richland that could involve increasing hours of service. Or if you go to the third point, adding a second library, perhaps in the Keene Corridor or Western Van Geesten, and another exciting opportunity is we, Richland School District, we met with them, they reached out to us, we went to the beautiful building just to the west of us and met with our superintendent who is from Spokane Public Schools, and so she was excited to share some of the things that they're, she learned of in Spokane Public Schools, so next slide. Okay, well, I'm not going to go there, sorry, I have but there's another slide in there, forgive me, but so Spokane Public Schools, we just toured Spokane Public Libraries yesterday, they are creating a model where they are currently, they've co-located some libraries and some schools and then they are able to enhance the buying power for those school districts and leverage the buying power of the library and really improve the quality of materials that are available to the schools. And so with the, I think the overall goal, or at least it would be for Mid Columbia Libraries, should we duplicate something like this, so to be, have one whole collection that would rotate across school districts and libraries so that you are being able to provide really rich content and books within the schools, as we know, they think they said that the Spokane Public Libraries, they, they did an audit, and so so many of the purchases have been made in nineteen ninety-five. So they're able to come in and really put brand-new resources, brand-new books, the kids are actually going to be excited to read into those schools, so we're excited about continuing to further that conversation with Richland Public Schools and kind of see what that might look like. And so this slide, while it's not our standard process for public commenter, customer satisfaction, we appreciated that somebody left this on the desk at our library in West Richland, so come on up, Jason, if you want to share.
Hello, Alice, nice to meet you all, some of you I already know and others are meeting for the first time. So I came to libraries through kind of a strange path, I started in high-tech with Hewlett Packard and moved on to strangely, the American Red Cross Blood Services here in town and intentionally switched over to libraries because of the impact that we have on society, the positive impact, there's a lot of negative forces and we like to see that we're one of the positive forces. My leadership philosophy at the West Richland Branch is that staff generates a sense of family. So when people come in the door, one of the things I was famous for when I worked at Kenwood was I knew more customers' names than anybody else. There's a very intentional act, activity of making sure people feel seen and I, I guess that's one thing I just want to let everyone know is our biggest goal there is to create a space where people feel welcome and it's a warm space and they feel like they almost have a sense of family there. And when I took over a year ago, it was a pretty dead library, the COVID pandemic had shut everything down, we were barely letting people on the branch and it's really nice to say that we are vibrant today. Very busy moments, the story hours are loud and boisterous and one example I'll leave you with, I'll keep it very brief, but the, when kids first started having story hours at the branch, I guess we started in March, maybe it was April or May. Many of the kids had never been to a story hour, they didn't have a lot of social rules, they didn't know what they were doing, it was pretty wild, it was, it was kind of out of control. But it's really nice after just a few months, a lot of the kids are repeat visitors and their behavior is starting to understand how to socialize, really getting along with each other and it's it's just really an important social good, I think, too, so we'll keep at it and that's all I ask, so thank you.
Thanks, Jason, yeah, I could see a three-year-old and then the pandemic, two years go by and all of a sudden he's five, you know, and then he goes to store and go, oh, that's it. So Sarah, go ahead and come up and join us and then I'll open, any questions Council might have with you, I have a couple up front. You said that you've got a community survey of two percent return, which is, which is great, and then as you said, you'd have approximately fourteen thousand cardholders in our residency. A question for your residency, City of West Richland zip code is nine nine three five three, is that how you determine residency of your cardholders?
Yes, generally, there's a few different ways we can look at it, but yes, or if they identify the West Richland, they could, you know, perhaps live elsewhere, but they've identified, you know, this library as their home library.
But do you have a breakdown of, of actual city residents as opposed to county individuals that support the nine nine three five three West Richland zip code?
I don't have it with me, but I will get it back to you.
That would be an interesting one, because obviously that's going to, that's going to make a difference in your community survey, depending on the balance of, of the two.
Oh, excuse me, so the survey is done by zip code. But as far as identifying who uses the West Richland Library and what the characteristics of those users are, it could be somebody who lives outside, as you mentioned, in the county or whatnot, that uses the West Richland Library, or it could be somebody who has the zip code, but I'm happy to dial that down and get that to you.
Yeah, that, I'd like to see, see that exactly, because you know, if you have fourteen thousand cardholders, how many are county?
Okay, I can get that to you.
And then we'd also like to have your PowerPoint, that would be interesting as well. And if staff, staff we might already have, we'll drive and we'll trade you empty ones for full ones.
Yeah, if only I had printed out the right one to follow today, so forgive me for my misstep.
Council, any questions of our Mid Columbia team?
I have a question, thanks for the presentation, it's really informative. What is the mix of staff that run the West Richland branch, how many people are there, obviously the manager?
Yeah, we, so we have four part-time staff that are customer service specialists and then we have three pages and then myself as the branch manager.
I'm just curious, with the, the temperatures starting to rise, have you seen that there are more people using the library and it does it seem like people are also going to the library to escape the heat or does it seem about the same as it was prior to it getting too long?
Definitely, so when we have one of those beautiful days that it's seventy-nine degrees and there's no wind, we, we get very quiet. But on these days where it's getting up to a hundred, we get a lot more business and we like to keep the AC just where people like it to get them in there.
And we thank Public Works to keep that AC nice and cold in our city and our city supply building, Bramble C L Library. Kudos, kudos to the team there. Anybody else? Okay, I see Captain Miller Stoker.
Yeah, so just for context, who's number one and two?
Piers, Piers.
No, that's fair.
Neither one of us are number one and two. Oh, you mean I'm talking?
Right, 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 of the library speculation.
Okay, got you, got you, so our branch on Union, which is where you can finally work, the, you know, forty percent of checkout are at that branch. Such a habit, houses forty percent of the collection there, and then as far as two or three would probably be one of the half of branches.
Yes, West Baskin.
That's, so we're compared to those.
One good thing about West Pasco, our summertime story, our summer reading challenge for, for the kids that we're doing, we do adults too, but we're typically not right on the heels of West Baskin, but this year we're right on the heels of West Baskin, so we've got a great sign up for summer reading challenges.
Councilman Bloom. Do you still have the mobile bus?
We sold that to Wallowalla County. It was impossible to run with COVID, right, there's no way, we did a analysis of the numbers and we were not seeing people use it as much as it to justify the cost, but we do still have rural services, so it's been modified, so we if you are a certain distance from one of our libraries, you can sign up as a rural library user and then we will deliver the items to your home. And then we have some return bins placed strategically across the counties and so you can return it there. So it's more personalized direct service than it would say the bookmobile, even though it's, the bookmobile is very messed and very fun in people's hearts.
So as far as the West Richland branch goes, you've got your new newly remodeled building, what do you anticipate? Do you have, do you have a wishlist for improvements to that building or maintenance issues that are coming up or anything that needs to be changed in the next two or three years?
Um, the only issue we're going to have is because we're getting so many customers where we might outgrow what we're doing, the branch itself is beautiful. I have very few issues and anything that is done is fixed very quickly, it's, it's been a really good relationship with the city and how good we get. But I mean, all our furniture is new and it's, it's really a nice situation, but we are it's story time, sometimes we're busting with the cities, so we're, it's a good problem now.
Very good, again, thank you, Sarah and Jason for coming to visit this evening and thank you, thank you. Council, with the, the change in the agenda with the no executive session, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as, as revised or revised?
I move to approve the agenda as revised.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried, thank you, Council. The consent agenda is now before us, which consists of payment of the bills, approved the minutes of the regular meeting June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. A motion to award two thousand twenty-two street striping project. Motion to authorize Ben Franklin Council of Governments Federal S T D G and tap grant applications. Motion to accept the S R two twenty-four Van Decent Improvement Project Phase One as complete. A motion to accept Paradise Way Phase Four Project as complete. A motion to authorize the mayor to execute professional services contract with Design West. And if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak, Parkinson, agenda this evening, please.
I'm Gary Gangle, I live at thirty-four twenty Lexington Way, I have for about seven years. What we're talking, or came to talk to you about tonight was the fireworks.
Sure, this is the consent agenda for speaking to the consent agenda, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to move on to the items not on the agenda at the first public comment session and then have you better work. Thank you very much, so any, anyone for items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one here, do we have anyone on the virtual line out there? On the consent agenda comment, Stephanie, she was?
Do not.
Very good, with that, Council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carried, thank you. And then, as mentioned, this is the first opportunity for citizen public comment for items not on the agenda. And if you would wish to provide comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address for record and give us three minutes of your time, appreciate it.
I'm Gary Gangle and we're thirty-four twenty Lexington Way. And we're just having an issue with the fireworks and I talked to a police officer earlier and they suggested they come talk to you, said that they thought there would be several people at the meeting talking to it. We're getting more and more debris every year, I've got five-gallon buckets full of crap that I've had to pick up out of my yard as well as the rain and I don't know what you call it, the chalky stuff from the fireworks that get this blown up, I got pox marks all over my driveway from it, I've got all over my roof, I've got my skylights are barred from it. We're trying to get set up so that we can do some solar panels and we're not wanting to have to figure out how to repair or clean, at the very least, or repair it anymore, are we going to do this? I would think that I would have the same property rights as other people, but to keep the garbage off of my property as they would for having been able to fire the fireworks from there. I don't know what you people can do about it or whatever, but it seems like it's increasing, we know we get a lot more sirens, we're not too far off a bombing range road, so we hear that. So obviously, there's an increase in firing police activity during this time. If the people can't be more responsible, I don't know how we can do anything besides just do like the rest of the city, Tri-Cities and just cancel the usage of it. Is, is there anything you can do for me, I appreciate you letting me know.
As we go through this meeting this evening, at the end of the meeting, we have a comment session, we'll counsel there'll be some, some comments and discussion that I'm going to bring forth, so invite you to stick around and
Thank you very much.
Anyone else this evening?
Hello, my name is Colin Gill, I live at one-one-three-four Belmont Boulevard here in West Richland. I am a service-disabled veteran who works from home. I am here tonight to request that ordinance W R M C one seven point five four point one oh three Echo Urban Beekeeping be amended. I am here to request that urban beekeeping be outlawed in West Richland for lot sizes under three acres. If ordinance V W R M C one seven point five four point one oh three Echo has not changed, more than likely I'll be dead by the end of this summer. I am allergic to bees, I have a prescription for medication that I have to take when I get stung by a bee. I have lived in West Richland for five years and up until the last thirty days, I have gone twelve years without being stung. In the last thirty days, I have had two near-death experiences that are directly related to this ordinance. I have been twice, I have been stung twice shortly after, the neighbor behind me decided to put beehives ten feet from where I spend the majority of my time on my point three three small acre lot. When I went to my neighbor after being stung to ask him to please move his hives, his When I went to my neighbor after being stung to ask him to please move his hives, his response was he is legal. Letting urban beekeepers put hives five feet from the back of their property line here in West Richland is a directed and substantial threat to my life. And to the lives of those allergic to bees living in this area. In order to spend time in my backyard, I must now employ the use of electric fans, smoke pits and various non-chemical methods to keep me safe. And it is still not enough. Going forward, I am being forced to use all legal, chemical, mechanical and biological means at my disposal to ensure that I see to live another day. Urban beekeeping should be held to the same level of responsible as those who bring dangerous animals onto their property. I request that the ordinance be rewritten. Be rewritten to ensure that all urban beekeepers have to post that they have dangerous animals on their property. I request that urban beekeepers be required to have insurance for the medical costs. That adjacent property overs will be covered from undue medical costs because of the fact that they are bringing bees into these areas. I am requesting that all hives be positioned on on the beekeeper's property in the center of their lots below five acres. If this rule doesn't change, I request that the City of Restletson, the City Council, to find either the Police Department or Wellness Check. Or the Police Department of Firemen to do a wellness check at my address at least once a week until the first freeze is sure than the event of my death. That from these bees and I'm not stinking up the neighborhood. Some of you here today, tonight may feel that I am overreacting to this issue. A a point to which my response is this. You can't experience the near death experience, but take one of these pins and inject yourself. And then for the and then before you pass judgment. Spend twenty four hours throwing up, experience blurred vision and the diarrhea that comes with this medication in order to live. In the event that this ordinance is not changed, I will more than likely be dead as I will not give up the use of my land. Since my neighbor has learned of my conditions, he has put up live stream cameras to watch my property for when I get stung. I will not be chased back into my house by these eco terrorists that have set up live streaming feeds to watch me as I get stung. The animal control officer, Marissa Rodriguez. Um that filed the report can verify this. The officer could clearly see and documented that the cameras were not pointed at the hive. For protection, that they were clearly pointed into my property to watch when I get stung. I haven't heard back from Officer Rodriguez on this issue yet. But for the record, Officer Rodriguez has been a consummate professional. And when she came to my house, she made this old disabled vet feel like he was listening to. I have taken steps with several national veteran service organizations to ensure that they have the ability to sue West Richland. For wrongful death in the event that this ordinance is not changed and I die. If you don't change this ordinance. You will have the blood of me and mine on your hands. Thank you very much.
Had a written prepared statement, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you would, I'm sure that was Stephanie, so we don't have to go back and read your finished private. Yeah, perfect. Thank you, sir. And uh there's a few people that have been on vacation. I've had some conversations with individuals and. Will be in time.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Online, Stephanie? Very good. Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions and public hearings. Ordinance thirteen or excuse me, item eight A is an ordinance to amend the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two budget and appropriate funds. And to do additional workspaces in the municipal services building. And to adjust the cooperative bid project cost due to the bids that we have received. And with that, I will ask uh Finance Director Aaron Glenn to present the staff report this evening, Aaron.
All right. Thank you, Mary Gary. Uh good evening, council, uh audience. Uh this evening, I'm presenting the fourth budget amendment of the twenty one twenty two biannual budget. Uh the first part of this amendment is for the general fund. The city is needing uh to add additional workspaces for the growing staff in the municipal services facility. Uh this amendment appropriates an additional forty thousand dollars from the ending fund balance to modify the public works. Uh community development workroom in this building. Uh with five additional office spaces. This includes labor for city maintenance staff. Uh to perform the work as well as furniture and equipment to outfit the offices. Uh is expected that four of the five workspaces will be utilized by two public works construction inspectors and two. Uh community development inspectors. Uh the second part of this amendment is for the Cooperative Way Project. Uh the construction bid was awarded on June seventh and the bed bid came in. Seventy five thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars higher than the engineer's estimate. Uh for this project, the city has an agreement with Benton R E A who will cover additional costs. Uh this amendment recognizes the additional revenue from Benton R E A and appropriates. Uh the additional expenditure in the amount of seventy five thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. Uh staff recommends passing the attached ordinance to amend the twenty one twenty two biannual budget. Uh this amendment authorize authorizes an increase in the. Uh twenty one twenty two appropriations in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. Bringing the total revised but uh expenditures to one hundred and eleven million, seven hundred and twenty two thousand sixty eight dollars. And a total revised budget to uh one hundred and thirty five million, uh eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to this agenda item this evening? See no one out here and virtually Stephanie, do we have anybody online?
I do not see anyone with their hand up, no.
That counsel, do I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance thirteen twenty two, amending the City of West Richland twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two biannual budget.
Second.
Motion and a second from Councilmember Moran. Counsel questions to uh Aaron and or any other staff member that might be involved with this project? Member Smart. Okay, I'm sorry, I was looking this way before. So he.
I yield the key first and then I'll I'll take it next, yeah.
All right, she's just gonna cue it up for you, right?
Right, all right.
I appreciate that. Uh thank you, Councilmember Smart. I just wanted to make sure that I had heard correctly. Um you said that first for the construction of the space at the municipal services facility. That all of the work would be done by city staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then for the second part, you said that although it was for seventy five thousand, that would be added to the budget. It's actually money coming from Benton R E A to cover that cost, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so in essence, we're truly adding just forty thousand dollars that the city is actually going to be spending.
Yeah, it it in the finance world, we have to do both sides all the time and that's usually why you see a big number at the end.
Right, but in essence, it's adding forty thousand.
There's a zero net in the fund three twenty one.
Got you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smart?
Yeah, so I just had some questions about the about the office space. What what space are we giving up to gain the office space? What where is this located?
It's in the back of the workroom, so if you were go out here, that big giant workroom, there's a back part that has. Uh currently is full of some file cabinets that are gonna be maneuvered around and they're gonna put five uh workspace cubicles.
Oh, are they just cubicles or are they floor ceiling walls?
Just it'll be cub- cubicles, so the the one wall will be a. Cubicle panel wall between that and the existing workspace. These are employees that typically spend a lot of their day out in the field. And so um to make room, we're gonna move them into that and open up space in the rest of the facility.
There's no actual construction per se, two by fours and sheet rock.
There, there is, we're gonna uh the entrance that comes off the hallway into that. Is gonna put a doorway in there and then uh the storage uh room that's in there. Uh we can need to relocate the door to the other side of it to make space for the cubicles. All right, pretty minor though, that are made. These guys will be able to handle them.
Councilmember Blue?
Mine's relatively simple. Inquiring minds wants to know where the uh inflation is running. Uh the increase in um cost estimate on the uh cooperative way would. What material was coming in by or was it like?
Asphalt, rock, um PVC pipe. Uh across the board, everything's up. And then the biggest thing was uh. Actually, the fittings, the water main fittings are in show supply.
Thank you. You have no one else? Uh may I uh all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried, unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh items eight being uh your previous eight B and C were previously advertised as public hearings this evening. However, those have been postponed to a later date yet to be determined. Uh so with that, we have no unfinished business or new business this evening. So this is the time for our second public comment. Uh if you'd like to address counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and residency for the record. Please leave your comments to three minutes. We'll see. See no one. Stephanie, do you have anybody out there in virtual land?
I do not have anyone with their hand up, no.
That will go ahead and move on to staff council announcements and reports and I will start with uh anybody that staff. Which card up, if you have something you'd like to address, counsel.
Chief. Thank you, Mayor, um and counsel. Tonight, I kinda wanna give the snapshot of the calls for service during the week leading up to the Fourth of July as well as. Up to um a couple days, the sixth of July after. I'm gonna give you a daily snapshot. Um the calls for service for the fireworks and then I'm gonna give you the number for other. Calls for service and that include anything across the board and as far as crime. So starting on the twenty eighth, the stands opened up at twelve noon and that day we had zero firework complaints. However, the officers handled thirty three calls for service that day. Uh June twenty ninth, we had one firework complaint. Turns out that that firework complaint, no contact was made by the officer. They did not observe it. Um I would like to remind counsel that in order for officers to actually cite somebody for these ordinance. They either need to observe it themselves of who's doing it. Or have a witness to it that would give a statement and be willing to take it to court. So that was a hurdle through this whole thing. I just wanted to say upfront. On the thirtieth of June, there was four firework calls. Um one was not located. One was an anonymous complaint, so they didn't even have a name, but was not observed by the officer. Um and then one was also an anonymous RP attempt to locate on the area and they didn't find it. On July first, there was one. Oh, let me back up. They had thirty two calls for service other than the fireworks that day. On July first, they had one that turned out to be again a no locate. They couldn't find it. Um and they had twenty seven calls for service that day other than fireworks. On July second, they had zero firework complaints. Um but calls for service that day, other than that, was twenty six. July third, they had seven. One was is actually cited. And five attempted, they attempted to locate, but they couldn't locate it. And one, they contacted the RP, but again, did not locate who was doing it. On July fourth, they had a total of fourteen. This one, I'll run through the numbers, but it was unique because I started reading some of the officers' comments on the Fourth of July and. Some of the complaints were coming in were just the fact that they were setting them off. It was during the time they could, but they just took those calls. However. Um. There is actually an investigation still going on because they were looking at. This piece, this complaint was actually in the business district, but they're confirming whether or not it was residential on the ground or if it was actually business district. But that investigation is closing up soon. I anticipate that that might be cited. So this would be the second citation possibly given. Um anonymous complaints on the Fourth of July was two, no locates five. Um again, anonymous RP attempted to locate three on that day and then a contact was made. Um. Talked to somebody about it, but again, they could not locate even with talking to somebody about it and that was three. That particular day, they had forty calls for service other than the firework complaints. The third and the fourth of July, we brought in extra patrol on overtime. As you can well imagine, the officers like to take vacations that are off already in that timeframe, but we brought it in because we had a um. The Masa trucks going on at the Red Mountain Event Center that for those two days. So we did have extra patrol on that night for both nights, the third and the fourth. Other than that, we ran minimum up until this point too. Just wanna let everybody know that. The fifth of July, there was ten firework complaints, two warnings given. There was no explanation whether the officers observe it. However. I I had given the order and the commanders had given the order. If they observed, they're gonna cite it, but there was no explanation on it, so I just wanted to be straight and honest about that. Um again, one anonymous, six no located. And then another one where they contacted, contact was made with an RP, but again, couldn't pick out where who had done it and where in the neighborhood. The sixth of July, there was one, oh, and back up. And there was fifty three calls for service that night, that day, other than fireworks. On the sixth of July, they gave uh there's one firework complaint. And forty three calls for service, that one firework complaint again was made contact, but they couldn't couldn't locate who who did it. I just wanted to give you guys a snapshot of this. So total. And that's from the sixth of July till noon, when this, when they're supposed to stop shooting them. So total firework complaints. Um for the whole week was thirty eight and calls for service was three hundred and thirty five for the total week, other than fireworks. Um. Other than that, um if you have any questions about, I'll I'll definitely answer those questions, but yesterday, as as many of you know, we also had a promotion ceremony at the police department. Um the turnout was amazing. Thank you for everybody that came out to that. The officers felt very supported. Um with the turnover of new chief position, everything else positions, people are being promoted. And now the department's stable as far as our leadership team. So but thank you for everything and thanks for everybody's support.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. It's it's difficult to say chief on this, Captain Grago.
Yes, sir.
You can call me mayor since we can't remember each other's names, right?
Right, right, mayor.
And uh so no other senior staff, too? Okay, very good. Uh I'd like to uh stay focused in the conversation that uh Chief Grago. Uh just just mentioned uh and and ask uh each of you council members uh. If you had any contact from citizens and also reach out to Stephanie after, actually, I'll start with Stephanie. Uh and ask Stephanie if she received any uh email complaints. Uh that she could pass on to council, if she already has not done so. Uh so Stephanie, would you report on any comments of Fourth of July, please?
Um sure. So I did receive, I believe it was two emails um that were forwarded to counsel um for your review.
I myself did not receive any uh emails or any phone talk. Uh but uh I will start with Councilmember Bloom. You have your card up. Uh. Mine was on the subject.
Okay, let me put your card up. I put my card on forward that.
Very good, I know, that's good thinking. So uh talking into the the that particular aspect of it, the. Councilmember Hayes, did you have any contact?
I had several um calls about it and um concerns, a lot to do. Um I thought this year was so extreme with the aerials. It was, it was kinda insane and everybody that has pets, a lot of the people have pets. There a lot of the veterans that I know um said, I mean, you they have to hide. Um when aerials and all that go off and and so I am concerned with that. Especially because I was hoping that doing the fireworks out at the raceway and for the community to go to. Um that that would maybe help this situation with the fireworks in West Richland. So. Um I did get a lot of input from a lot of people and so it, I just hope we have the chance that we can um work on this. And I think you were telling me a plan.
You would like, you would like to have a further conversation about the ordinance that's in place?
Yes, I would love that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Moran?
I very similar to Councilmember Hayes. I did not receive.
I very similar to councilmember Hayes, I did not receive many emails, but I did get a lot of people calling me about it and asking me, hey, when is this gonna end, and we do still hear people with aerials, I just heard somebody yesterday shooting something off right before dusk. Um, I I'm sure that I've mentioned it before, my own dogs, um I have one that is terrified of them. I had to soup up my sound system to cover up big booms with my bass, but I would like to re um I would like to go back and look at the ordinance because a lot of people, especially in Bird Hill, have said that there is some serious issues. And I will say that I appreciate everything that the police department does, I know it's very difficult, and the law is very clear on having to at least see it or have somebody willing to bring it to court, make statements, et cetera. So I just I I would like to see some changes, maybe go away from aerials, do just the more on the ground at least. Uh myself also, as a veteran, uh I have a different type of PTSD, but is not my favorite thing.
Better, how about you?
Uh, I've talked to several citizens that were in favor, um as liaison to Benton Fire District Four. Uh, report from uh Chief Carlisle, there were actually fewer calls out this year for service, there were five versus six from last year. Um, so I I know we had a kind of a wet spring, and who knows if that maybe kind of held on fires, but uh I mean, I think it is time for us to talk about it, the city's growing significantly, we've got a lot more multifamily and higher density houses coming in. I I think it's time to have a conversation.
Councilmember Bloom, did you have any contact?
Um, I didn't have any contacts, I I did have a contact and I asked a question of someone at the R A A meeting. And um, you know, they they didn't have a issue. Uh, I guess my personal perspective is, I actually thought it was a little calmer than the previous year. Um, but what I did notice is we seem to have a lot more vendors. And um I, you know, and, you know, my reflection, if you remember going back in history, I'm the one that that sort of crafted what we have there, reducing the number of days and hours and things of that nature. Uh, I I'm willing to revisit the time because I actually, you know, if you reflect back, I saw no need for fireworks on the second. Um, and also, I would believe that uh um, you know, it's it's probably uh advisable to reduce the hours on the court from eleven to five. And so those, and and then to follow then, my my thought was possibly limiting number of vendors within city limits to X, and hold a lottery type of break or something of that nature. But those are the only suggestions that would grow to keep, because, yeah, I don't know, uh Aaron, Aaron, how many permits do we issue this year, were they more than previous year?
Well, the ordinance says the finance director does it.
Yeah, I don't remember the number of permits that were issued, but I uh just remember hearing from the permit issuer that there was I think three or four more this year than there have been.
And and I I'm just afraid of of, we're getting the, we're supplying the 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 community with illegal fireworks and, you know, the other municipalities don't agree with. So, you know, I'm willing to revisit it, I mean, obviously it won't affect next year, but, you know, if we do something this year, you know, it will be in the long term.
Councilmember Smart, if you have any, sure, comments, contacts?
Well, I I didn't have any uh beyond the two that Stephanie forwarded to us, they were email contacts, they're fairly generic, it's the same um comment year after year after year, in about the same proportion, in my opinion, uh that it's always has been. Um. We are talking about a celebration of America's independence. We are talking about a celebration of America's independence, which is uh dictated by our forefathers to be celebrated with fireworks. So it's not outside of historical relevance that we do this. I personally didn't light off a single firework, don't have to, because we live in West Richland. Now, I want to address, um and and I would say that from my point of view, which we happen to have a a a nice piece of property that overlooks the city. Um, I would say that the fireworks were far were significantly, maybe, you know, ten percent less than I recalled seeing in previous years. But what I will say is that I heard a couple of early fireworks that went off, that sounded like I don't know, maybe what a howitzer would sound like or something, there were some very, very, very large explosions that seemed to be coming from the west of my position, which was right around Flat Top, and so much so that that our windows rattled, and I don't think this thing was closer than a half a mile from where we were, just from, you know, sort of audibly visualizing that uh it wasn't close, it was just really, really loud. Now, here's the thing, I challenge us as a community, that you can make a law that says you can't do that. How are you going to police them? I I just don't know, I mean, I don't have a technology that will help us identify when or where an explosion went off, I mean, if, like the chief said, if there's a witness, there are ordinances on the books now, which we can enforce. And and we will, I have confidence. But if you can't identify or prove that the event happened, we've got a, we've got a technical issue here. Making a law that says you can't shoot off a firework isn't going to solve that problem. Now, there's another ordinance on the books about having projectiles come from one person's property to the next. If I know, because I I read it, because I was concerned about BB guns, you know, back in the day when my kids wanted to do BB gun target practice, right? Um, if you find a projectile on your property, and it's uh came from somebody else, and I I'll I'll just leave it at that, because I don't want to get in trouble with the lawyer or misstate the ordinance, but I can just reference you to the fact that there are laws on the books that that don't allow people to throw trash on your property and don't allow people to put projectiles, especially dangerous ones, on your property. I can't cite them because I wasn't prepared to talk about that, but but look it up, and then and then, but see the still, there's the burden of proof. And so that's a problem that we have, I mean, as a council member, as council members here, you know, we you can pass laws, you can make up rules, but if there's no way to enforce them, well, that's kind of fall, so I I just want to keep, have everybody keep that in mind, and it's also a challenge, if if you can think of a way come up with some magic that allows us to enforce a law, it'll make it a lot easier to 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 implement it in the first place, right, but you know, speeding, we have radar guns. You know, we have cops that can 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 track track your motion. Uh, and and so we can enforce speed limits, I I don't know how to enforce a firecracker, especially an illegal one going off um without an observation or witness like the chief said, so. I mean, it's not like I like to have my windows rattled by a a a military grade explosive going off down the street. Um, but I don't know who did that. And I don't know how to say who did. So I just want to make make it clear that it's not like we're not sympathetic, but but there has to be something practical in the application here, that 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 you need to have a way to enforce every rule, and so every ordinance we pass costs us money to enforce, and and you have to have a way to enforce it, so just, you know, you know, because one way you could force it is is have a cop on every corner. You can't do that, we know that, so, so I I I I'm baffled at the solution to this problem. Um, I I mean, even we look over, we can actually see all of Richland, and I believe, does Richland allow areas these days? Well, there's plenty to go off, let me tell you, the whole place is lit up, and and so I look at that and I go like that's not the solution, I think that what I would focus on is the education. You know, I think people need to be educated as to what a firework is, the damage it can do, uh just a cultural politeness education, you know, I think we could concentrate on that. I'd also think that we could concentrate on um on advertising the uh the public displays that we have available, and making that, trying to promote that, get less people out of their backyards and more people out to the public displays. So I just wanted to also um acknowledge that I heard Mr. Gill's complaints about beekeepers, and I appreciate those comments, sir, uh what you said makes um sense, I have to let you know that as a, I've got a few acres and I don't keep bees, but um I've had neighbors in the past that have kept bees, and you're right, they they can come up with uh traps, and it's it's wise to stay out of those runways. Um but but it sure makes sense to have uh an ordinance that that doesn't allow bees to be put on a property line of somebody's property, so I I'm I'm supportive of that, and we'll have to have that conversation later about the details of a potential amendment to that ordinance. I I think that you stated, I like your fact that you were reasonable in saying that there was an acreage limit, you know, maybe beekeeping shouldn't happen on a point three acre lot. Um but it's okay if you have three acres, or I think probably a two and a half acre lot is what's common in West Richland. So there might be some some opportunity to make some amendments there, and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, so. Well, well, amen, amen.
Let, we're we're gonna, yeah, we understand, sir.
So that's, that's.
Comments and quickly council stuff, I'll be back.
So that's the, that's the end of my comments, I appreciate the
In conversation of.
The attendance of of our citizens, and I very much appreciate the feedback that you've given us, and uh um, if you have further suggestions, please don't hesitate to contact us through Stephanie, council, thanks.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Spoker, and then we'll go to Mayor Proton Brink who's online.
Um, well, I guess I did get one email, I wasn't aware that nobody else had received. It says Gary Roberts at the beginning, but it's signed Andy Roberts at the end, so I can forward that on to Stephanie as well, I I was under the impression everybody would have seen. Um, and with regards to fireworks, I mean, I I'm, I agree with councilmember Smart here about the enforcement. I mean, Pasco um allowed fireworks again a couple of years ago because it's impossible to enforce. And Kennewick has just also passed an ordinance that's going to allow them starting next year, so. Um, again, because they can't stop it, um I think probably part of it is, is they want some of the fireworks generating that sales tax that um they're losing right now because they can't, they don't allow, so. Um, you know, it makes me upset to hear people letting off fireworks outside of the appropriate hours. I would agree with that any day of the week, I mean, I think it's wrong that you get three nice days to be able to shoot them off. And I don't know why anybody would want to shoot them off when it's still daylight outside, but I see it all the time. I mean, you're, if you really want to burn your money, I can take it. But um so I I mean, I tried to uh, you know, the last council meeting, uh before the fourth, I tried to encourage people to stick within the rules that we currently have, because it doesn't do us any good to be breaking the ordinances that we have, and it's making more people unhappy about the fact that you're doing it outside of the appropriate time. Um. I believe there were two small fires that I heard that were quickly put out, but I didn't hear of anything big that occurred during this time, so I was very pleased with that. Just goes to show to me that we still be responsible as far as even that type of scenario is concerned. Um, from from my observations, and there's nothing scientific about it, but it's the stuff that's on the ground that tends to be the most dangerous stuff, and given to potentially dirt grasses and that kind of thing, um. So, but I was pleased to see that this year, I followed them pretty diligently, trying to watch the headlines to see what's going on, because it always concerns me about this time of year.
Mayor Proten Brink, joining us from afar, we have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, with regard to fireworks, uh in addition to the two emails that Stephanie uh forwarded uh to all of council, I did receive one additional complaint from one citizen. Um, my views on fireworks are this, uh with our growing population, I think that we should continuously uh make efforts to ensure that our ordinances uh match our population and the characteristics of our city. And I would therefore welcome the opportunity for the entire council to uh reexamine the fireworks statute in our municipal code to make sure that it's still consistent with our changing city. Um, there are also many other steps we can take, which other council members have expressed, education perhaps, limiting sales perhaps, and other steps, but I would welcome an opportunity to just continue this discussion in another uh forum, uh where we can examine all aspects. Those are my comments, sir.
Very good, and uh
Yeah, I did remember one thing.
Fire related, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, my, by my count, there were twelve states this year, and there were ten last year. So there was an increase of two that I could count, but that doesn't mean I saw every state. But uh, I have a vested interest in trying to figure out how many there are out there, so um uh we did try to count, and I got twenty.
Thank you. And we're gonna come back around for any other comments, council, that that you may have, uh the concern that I have, even though I'm not a voting member, my responsibility is to bring to uh council opportunities for discussion. Uh, the city's growing, it's grown at an exponential spa- uh rate, uh and that's what concerns me. There's gonna be a point where uh it's more out of control than it can be at times. Um, I do have personal beliefs, but uh it's what council decides is 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 gonna go on, and that's the vote that you guys have to do, have to make, you have to make the tough decisions, what's best for the whole community while uh making sure that you uh allow the exercise of the right for others that may be opposed to it. Uh, remember many years ago, as councilmember Bloom alluded to, uh big changes, I was part of that change as well. We cut down the time and we cut down the days, uh then we ended up closing parks. Uh, we worked in the school district to reduce the ability for their properties to be used. And we we met the public in the middle. When we had big town hall and built up Enterprise Middle School and had the pros and the cons, it was a fifty-fifty. And every year I asked council, on my third term, every year I asked council, is it time to look at this ordinance again? And I believe this is the first time that I've had the consensus of a majority that wants to sit down and have a conversation in a workshop set. So with that, uh you know, budget's busy time, we've got a lot to do in regards to that. Uh, and and as a reminder, uh if council does make any changes to a fireworks ordinance, that does not come into effect until the following year after the next, for example, Kennewick uh passed in two thousand twenty-two fireworks ordinance in twenty-three, they will, they will still be illegal in City Kennewick. It'll be in two thousand twenty-four that they will be able to discharge fireworks. City Kennewick, Richland, Pasco have the same ordinance. And that would be something that I might consider suggesting to council to take a look at it to be on the same page as all three of the, all four of the other three cities. Uh while, yes, you cannot police it, there's no no policing of officers in the in the region that will be able to police it. Uh, and I did have conversation with all of the other city managers, both last year and this year. Uh, if they felt that with the city of West Richland selling aerial fireworks, did that contribute to the increase to use of aerial fireworks within the city? Well, the answer was yes, and the answer was not, and so why about the no answer? Well, you can sell no fire, no aerial fireworks in any of the four cities, and they're gonna go out to the reservation or anywhere else, they're gonna bring them and say they're gonna discharge. Now that is where the opportunity comes, or the challenge might be for the police department to in this case, witness the discharge of an illegal firework that was larger than a two inch mortar. Inch and a half, excuse me, thank you. Inch and a half, excuse me, thank you. There's so many you can't remember, right? I've got wads in my yard that are pretty, pretty doggone big. But if you have, if you have an ordinance that eliminates the aerial aspect of it, it's pretty darn simple to figure it out if you see a discharge. So we're going to have, we're going to have a workshop. We're, we'll, we'll advertise the workshop to discuss the West Richland ordinance. We'll invite the public to come in and observe the workshop, participate by way of Zoom or in person for a, for to to attend it and take in the conversation. There will not be any dialogue back and forth. It's a workshop amongst the seven council members to determine what direction, if any, they choose to go. So look forward to that. When it's going to happen, I can't tell you that. Like I said before, we're also busy with my, but it's a busy time. So like anything else, we'll squeeze it in, like that. Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, perfect. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to council comments and related to the fireworks discussion that we just had, and see Councilmember Bloom.
Well, I just want to say that yesterday was the first day for, this Rachel Blaser. She's our new general manager of Ben Franklin Transit. At the last Ben Franklin Transit Board meeting. We permanently removed the sales tax initiative aspect from the agenda. So we will not be putting a threat of the voters, the unknown of cutting sales tax from Ben Franklin Transit. This is mainly based on analysis I did and presented to the board. Whereby, if we were to cut one tenth of a cent sales tax from Ben Franklin Transit, we'd be getting deficit spending in two years. Right now, we'll be at deficit spending in seven years. Hopefully, we'll get some efficiencies. And actually, Mr. Gill used to always say, give a bus discussion. Today I went out and actually visited, we have a a mini bus. You know, the short bus. No, we 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 have a vendor that is proposing a smaller bus, which is not exactly a dollar ride, but it AVA depend compliant. But it would be possibly used for some of the evening and some of the smaller affairs. It was actually on the one ten route today. If you saw the white van running by. It sort of looks like the big, the big vans. It's a little van, it's on Dodge chassis. It rides quite well and actually lowers down for people to get on, so. Some changes coming up. It may not be cost effective, but it actually it's not going to be cost prohibitive. It's sort of a crossover. There, you know, the cost of a bus coming to a bus stop is primarily driver. And so wages is the majority of it. But the buses are running. Just remind everybody, anyone eighteen and a hundred rides free. Anybody sixty-five or older rides free, except for that, all right? Yeah, I've had my, I've had my free rides since we raised them for age from sixteen to sixty-five, so I quickly went and got my, my card when I was sixteen. So, but anyway.
Very, thank you. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. So first, I want to remind everyone to make sure that you check that you have received your voter's pamphlet and your actual ballot, because ballots are out for the primary. Hopefully, everyone will participate and vote. I believe that they're due by the second of August. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Roscoe. So be on the lookout for that and please vote. Also, thank you very much, sir, for the comments about bees. The only concern that I would have is to make sure that we are following the RCW, the laws that we have for Washington that do provide some ability for beekeepers to keep their bees, but I'm assuming that we would absolutely look into that before looking further. Thank you. So definitely, thank you very much, and also thank you for the comments about the fireworks I've seen. I did attend the Association of Washington Cities event, the conference, as did Mayor Pro Tim Brink. And I was going to talk about some of them, but in the efforts to save some time, I will say that it was a fantastic conference. There were a lot of people that I was able to meet, make contact with, discuss what's going on in their cities. Perhaps we might be able to change or increase the things that the city is doing here. But a lot of them are online to view, so definitely check out AWC's website to see if you have any of those that you're interested in watching the videos for. Particularly, one of them that I went to, the two of them that I went to that were really great, and hopefully they reported those were, there was one on opioid, opioid pandemic. There was just a lot of information from I can't remember the city for the life of me, but they're Port Angeles, doing fantastic work there. And also the changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. There is a conference in twenty twenty-three closer, it's in Spokane. It is June twentieth through twenty-third. So hopefully, more of you will be able to attend if possible. And I would also like to congratulate Mayor Pro Tim. I don't want to take his thunder, but he might have an announcement to make regarding the AWC conference. So I'll let him do that. In regards to meetings, Ben Franklin Council of Governments, there was a change that occurred on the seventeenth of last month at that meeting. And they are closing out the revolving loan funds and giving them back to the originating organizations that are allowing them to happen and providing them for loan services. And there is also new staff member, a new deputy director of operations, Kristi Hack for Ben Franklin Council of Governments. Other stuff is fairly minor, but I can definitely provide more information on that. There was something at the end of the last meeting, which Roscoe, I thought you would be interested in. There is a John Kennedy, he said that at the end of that meeting, he had just received an email about a notice of funding opportunity from Senator Cantwell's office about the Infrastructure Act that we might want to look into. He hasn't sent me the email yet. I will ask him again for that, and when I receive it, I'll forward it to you, but it sounded like something that we might want to pop in on. And that's all again.
Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, I wanted to give a big shout out to Bitnaria. They just had their annual meeting on Saturday, and several people here, maybe in the audience, went. It was a great meeting, and it just keeps growing, getting better and better, and and it's just wonderful having Bitnaria as one major community partner in this city. The other thing is, we have, we're working with the West Richland Police. We have National Night Out coming up on August second. It's from five to eight P M at Flat Top Park. And so it's just a wonderful event. Some businesses, they can sign up as long as they come and they do a children's activity. And there's no fee for them. And then we put together hamburgers and hot dogs and chips. And the Red Mountain Lions group does all the barbecuing. And then we go out and one really fantastic thing that I think a lot of the parents appreciate is we go out and buy backpacks and we buy paper and pencils and crayons and everything and fill them with that and give away to the kids. So looking forward to helping the police department with that and put it on. I encourage everybody to come out. It's a free event. And just to get to know our officers better, so it's a great one. Thank you.
One question for National Night Out, is they're going to, is the dunk tank coming back?
No, it is not.
Oh, I I thought it was ritual. You put the new chief on the dunk tank.
Not this year, mayor.
I thought it was just the mayor. Bear appreciates it at a hundred degree weather. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Much appreciated. Mayor Pro Tim Brink again out there in Florida land.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two comments. Number one, Councilmember Moran kind of hinted to it. I did win election to a seat on the AWC Board of Directors. So I will be representing District Two, which includes Benton County plus six other neighboring counties. So I'm excited about that opportunity to serve on the Board of Directors, but more importantly, as Councilmember Moran mentioned, the ballots are out, the voter pamphlets are out. One proposition on the ballot for this election, local ballot measure is the EMS or Emergency Medical Services Levy for the Benton County Fire District Four Services that they provide, of course, to our city, emergency medical services, as well as parts of Benton County. I encourage all voters to take a look at the voter pamphlet. Gather information as as you need in order to make an educated decision on this very important ballot measure. But the request is to restore the EMS property level to fifty cents per thousand dollars, which is the level that was approved by the voters in twenty sixteen. So once again, it's important in order to make sure that the city has EMS services that meet the standards the citizens want. So please take a look at the ballot measure in the pamphlet and gather the information you need to make the right decision. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Brink. Much appreciated. Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, very briefly, with some of the information systems brought to us tonight and and just wanted to make a comment on the general nature of addressing your city council or your mayor. I hear a lot of people make comments on social media. They they complain to each other on social media. There's and I won't name the names on social media. They all know what these applications are. And and ferment and froth starts to build between people as they complain about what's happening in their city, or they don't like this, or they do like that, or and the thing is, is that as council members, that's not how to communicate to us. If you want to communicate to us, do what these folks did tonight. They came in and and sat down, had a chat with us, or at least presented their case, and then we'll be able to address those things, or or write us an email and send it to Stephanie. The city has a website. There is pretty obvious ways on the website to click, to link, to contact all of us, and that's the right way to do it. So just just, I mean, there have been a lot of issues, and especially with fireworks as well, that people complain a lot on the social apps. That's not an effective way to communicate to any government, whether it's the state, federal, or local. So so please do what these citizens have done tonight. They've come in and and talked to us, and they've written letters, and those of you that did write, you're doing the right thing by by voicing your opinions that way, but we can't really address comments on social media. It's not an official form of communication for the government. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Tom. Much appreciated. All right. Anything else, counsel?
Hey, Bree. I was just wondering, so there was mention of National Night Out, and that is the first Tuesday of the month. So are we're not having councils?
Everybody else is is off that evening, but you're required to.
I just didn't, I I didn't recall after looking at the last meeting.
Well, let's let's have one at the National Night Out. I I mean, it would be, you know, at least we would have a bigger audience.
You have seven dunk tanks available, Councilmember Hayes.
We can make that happen, but make it six.
So, no, yes. So, yeah, with National Night going on, we will.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
With that, I will adjourn this meeting at seven twenty-four. Thank you, counsel.